...
Uh huh.
We are in session.
Good to go?
Good to go.
Okay. All right, folks. Well, I didn't do it, I promise. We'll come back to order for our next docketed item. And as always, I'll call on Ms. Nunn to read the next docket, please.
Docket PZ-18-015, application has been filed by Barry and Cynthia Laws for the approval of a development plan and conditional use indoor mini storage and outdoor vehicle storage with waivers section 260 through 400, three minimum lot size, section 280-080, non-retail commercial recreational parking requirements, section 250-140, outdoor sales, storage or display standards. Or on approximately 2.11 acres, the property is located at 6401 Cross Keys Boulevard in Crestwood. The zoning is C-3, general business district.
All right, thank you. And with that, Ms. Beeman, I guess you're introducing the docket for us?
Yes, sir. Brooke Beeman with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. You have a few requests before you today. One is a conditional use permit for indoor mini storage. Another is a conditional use permit for outdoor storage. And then a development plan with waivers. So the minimum lot size waiver will apply to both the indoor and outdoor storage requests. And the last three waivers only apply to the outdoor storage request. The applicant is Barry and Cynthia Laws. The address is 6401 Cross Keys Boulevard in Crestwood. The lot size is 2.11 acres. The zoning is C3, general business district, and the existing land use is an indoor firing range. This is an aerial view of the site. This subject property is outlined in red. You can see there's an entrance off of Concord and an entrance off of Cross Keys. This is the current zoning of the area. The subject property is Zone C3. There's R2A, C3 to the north, which is this vacant lot. C3 to the south. C1 to the east, which is an apartment complex. And C3 to the west, which is an indoor storage facility and another apartment complex. The applicant is proposing to redevelop open range into an indoor self-storage facility, which is a mini warehouse. It requires a conditional use permit in C3, general business district. The standards for a C3 business district require a minimum lot size of three acres, and the property is currently two acres, so it will require a minimum lot size waiver if you choose to approve the conditional use permit. This is the applicant's submitted floor plan for the proposed indoor use of storage. They're proposing approximately 396 indoor units, 296 on the first floor here, and 100 units on the second floor. The minimum parking requirements for indoor storage is one space for every 10 units plus one space per employee. So the minimum standards for indoor storage is 41 spaces. The current parking that is on the site is roughly 116 spaces on the property. We'll get back to the proposed parking once we talk about the outdoor storage conditional use permit. But currently, if you're just considering the conditional use permit for the indoor storage, it does meet the parking requirement. This is the site plan of open range, and this will remain generally the same with the indoor storage use. According to the applicant, will be no additions or anything to expand the footprint of the building, just remodeling and repurposing on the inside. The justification from the applicant's application states that the use is desirable. There's a waiting list for climate-controlled units in Oldham County, that repurposing an existing building can provide the needed use for the community and still protect the character of the area. And the applicant listed several goals and objectives from the comprehensive plan in their justification statement, which is in your application. The applicant is also proposing an outdoor storage facility, which requires a conditional use permit in C3, general business district. You've seen the requirements in the conditional use standards. The minimum lot size for this use is three acres, so if you choose to approve the conditional use for outdoor storage, you'll have to waive the three-acre requirement. The justification for outdoor storage is that the use is desirable, that outdoor storage units are at near capacity. It will allow the applicant to use, to develop the entire property into its highest and best use. And again, the applicant listed goals and objectives from the comprehensive plan in their application. And I'll let the applicant expand on that in their presentation. So the applicant is requesting the following waivers. The first waivers, the minimum lot size waiver, and that is required for both the conditional use permit for indoor storage and the conditional use permit for outdoor storage. The following three waivers only apply to the conditional use for outdoor storage because there's a separate section that talks about outdoor storage, and there are separate requirements that are not required with indoor storage use. So the first is the parking waiver. We'll get to that. We already talked about the minimum lot size waiver. The justification is that the applicant has provided other examples of indoor storage facilities in Oldham County under three acres. The second waiver is the parking waiver. Our standards for parking require one space per 10 storage units plus one space per employee. The applicant's current parking allows for 116 spaces. So with the indoor storage, they meet the parking requirement. If they just, if the commission decides to approve the outdoor storage, the applicant will most likely need a parking waiver. The applicant has, is not sure at this time the number of outdoor storage stalls that will fit on the site, so I, as the staff member, cannot calculate the exact number of parking that's going to be required. So the applicant is just requesting that the parking, that the commission just require him to install six spaces for indoor use, for the indoor uses of storage, and then one space for employees, so seven spaces total. The justification is that there are three other storage businesses in Oldham County that do not meet the parking requirements, and that the thoroughfare between vehicle roads can be used for parking areas to pick up and drop off storage. The next waiver is related to landscaping and screening, and this is section 250-140, which talks about outdoor storage. Number four states that all outdoor sale, storage or display merchandise, material or equipment shall be completely screened from view of residentially zoned or used property and right-of-way by solid fences, walls, buildings or landscape features, or by a combination of screening elements. And B, number one, basically says the same thing. It just says that all outdoor storage areas shall be screened from view by solid fences, walls or buildings not less than six feet in height. So the applicant is requesting that you either waive that screening requirement, or if you don't feel comfortable with that, that you would allow a six-foot opaque fence facing 1800, 800 Cross Keys Boulevard, which is the apartment complex, and then a six-foot chain link fence screening the rest of the property. The justification says that the fencing is expensive, that fencing to satisfy a neighborhood zone C1 seems unnecessary. It provides partial cover for vehicle, trailer and boat storage of various sizes towards the apartment complex, and the look is similar to the neighboring outdoor facility, which was the Storage Masters 2, located off of Cross Keys Boulevard. The last waiver request is for the outdoor storage setback. Section 250-140 states that outdoor storage shall not occur within 25 feet of any right-of-way. The applicant's justification states that this would allow the applicant to use the property without tearing out existing blacktop at great cost. This is the, again, just the site plan as is, how the parking lot currently sits. So the apartments are located over here off of Concord. And as you can see, the property has, it's basically a corner lot. It sits at the corner of Concord and Cross Keys. So that requirement that outdoor storage shall not occur within 25 feet of any right-of-way, the applicant would be required to not allow any outdoor storage within 25 feet of the property line at Concord and the property line at Cross Keys. So it would be 25 feet this way, which would, I didn't calculate the square footage that that would allow, but it would be, you know, somewhat tight area for the applicant to use for outdoor storage. This is the site plan that was amended to show you how the applicant would use the property for outdoor storage. I've highlighted in yellow the area of the opaque fencing that the applicant is proposing for screening. So the six-foot opaque fence would screen the apartments on this side, and then the rest of the property lines would be chain link fencing. And the applicant has shown areas where electric gates will be installed to provide security for the outdoor storage facility. And they've also put the parking spaces up in the corner. This is the west view, looking west from Cross Keys Boulevard. You can see one of the adjoining property owners, which is Just for Kids. And then the open range parking lot begins here. You can see the outdoor mini storage in the background. And this is just a zoomed-in view of the open range parking lot. Another view of open range. This is the east view, so it's looking back towards Cross Keys and 146. And this road here is Concord Avenue, which is the, which serves the apartments. So this is looking, this is Concord, and the entrance of the apartments is located off of Concord, right, right about in that direction. This is the adjoining property to the east, which is Cross Keys Apartments. And if you look at the aerial down at the bottom of your screen, this is the apartment This is the north view, looking from the other entrance off of Concord that serves open range. And you can see all of the, you can see some of the buildings for the apartment complex from this location and their parking lot. These are the adjoining properties to the south, which is southeast and their facility, and then the Just for Kids location. All about kids, sorry. I knew I was getting that wrong. It didn't sound right. Okay. And then this is, again, just a zoomed-in view, looking east on Cross Keys. You can see the storage facility, all about kids. And then this is an existing building on open range that they're also proposing to be indoor mini storage. This is the west, this is looking west from the apartments. So I'm standing in the parking lot of the apartments and looking into the open range parking lot. So this road here is Concord. And just another west view. So this is the back half of the open range facility. So in summary, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for indoor mini storage. They're requesting a conditional use permit for outdoor storage. And then they're requesting a development plan with four waivers. So the minimum lot size waiver, again, would apply to the indoor mini storage and the outdoor storage, but the last three waivers would only apply to the outdoor storage conditional use permit if you choose to approve that. That's all I have.
All righty, thank you. And Mr. Shade, would you come up and provide your report as far as the county engineer's office?
Good morning. Derek Shade, representing Oldham County Engineering Department. Comment is similar to the last one. Based on the planning commission package, the development plan for the property appears to be confined to the interior, inside conversion of the buildings. We just want to verify that no external earthwork is being conducted, and if it is, we'd like to see those construction plans in the future.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, any questions for staff? Yes, sir, Mr. Hampton?
I just want to be sure I've got this clear. The, what's before us is, it's one docket item, but it's two different things. Is that correct, or is it all one, or what?
Well, there's, there's an easy part of this, and there's a harder part. The easy part is similar to the previous case, where they're talking about repurposing an existing building on the interior, and there's a conditional use application for that. And the waiver of the minimum lot size. The harder portion is the outside storage, which has many more waivers attached to it.
Well, my, okay, my focus is, though, down the road, are we going to be, is it going to be, we're going to be voting on all or nothing?
No. You're going to, you're going to vote on each one of those. There's going to be a lot, we got a lot more sheets this time, and we're going to, we're going to go through each one, and the first-
We're going to vote on them separately.
Yeah. The first will be the waiver for the minimum lot size, and then the first consideration of the indoor storage. Those will be two separate motions and votes. Then there'll be a whole series of waivers related to the outside storage, and then a conditional use for the outside storage. And ultimately, the approval of a development plan if all of those go through.
Thank you.
Lots, yeah.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? Mr. Finney, do I see a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Douglas.
This is, probably should have said something before. I've actually shot at that facility, so I don't know if that's a conflict or not, so I wouldn't see, I mean, I would go to any other business, but I wouldn't.
No.
Thank you.
Unless you think it is.
Or you profit from this. I mean, that's the biggest test, is whether you have financial gain from-
Well, and I've, I've bought, you know, guns there, and, you know, so, I mean, I think if that was the case, there'd be a whole lot of folks that couldn't participate, so, yeah, okay. Any additional questions for staff? Mr. Faubie?
Along those lines, I forget how long that's been there, but my firm sold them that property 20 some odd years ago. I've never shot there. I've never, I've never been to the facility, so-
I wouldn't see any conflict, would you, Mr. Carter?
No.
No. Okay. All right, any, I'm sorry.
Sometimes we-
Yeah, we normally do, but that's, I don't think so. I mean, Mr. Carter, do you see that?
No.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. We'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representatives and others in support of the application. Mr. Law? And before we get started, just for the record, you are representing yourself, you don't, you're not part of a corporation or an LLC, or you and your wife own the property-
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Carter, do you see any issues there?
Not unless he's in LLC.
He's not.
No.
So, could I ask for clarification? Do you want me to do everything? Because you're right, we could get into the weeds with this. Do you want me to start with the conditional use permit, and we talk about that, or do you want me to just?
Well, it's, it's your, you know, it's your presentation, so-
Can we cut it up, and you guys discuss it? Because otherwise, I don't want everybody getting lost on, it's up to you.
We are going to consider it individually, you know, the waivers, the waiver request and whatever, and we're going to vote on those individually. So if you want to, you know, I mean, it's-
Is Open Range a corporation?
Open Range is a corporation.
But he owns the land individually. Open Range is not submitting the application. He, as the landowner, is submitting the application.
Mr. Carter, are we okay?
I think so.
Okay.
If it's not, it's practicing one without a license, so.
Okay.
My last name is Laws.
All right. The presentation is, you know, is kind of up to you. I mean, it's, you know, we are, you have heard the outline of how we're going to consider the applications, so-
All right, well, you know how to ask questions, so if I get, we'll just go from-
Let's get, let you get, you sworn in first, and then we'll get your name and address for the record. Ms. Nunn?
Do you tell them, sort of, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And then just name and address, please.
Barry Laws, 3411 Fendley Mill Road, La Grange, Kentucky, 40031. So just to bring people up to speed who haven't shot there or sold me a building, I'm Barry Laws, this is Cynthia Laws, my wife. We were one of the first people to come into Oldham County's Crestwood Station and rehab it. By that, I mean, it was a blighted area. It was really bad, and this is about 13 years ago. So we bought the building from that gentleman, and we have since made it a thriving business until Trump got elected. Once Trump got elected, the firearm industry had an issue, and the issue was the business really slowed down. So what I'm after is, like any good businessman, is using the property to the highest and best use, and I think that's a reasonable thing to do. Climate-controlled self-storage is a little bit different than outdoor self-storage, so we have two considerations here. Climate self-storage is so people can allow their belongings not to get rotten, basically, or warp, or have mice eat it, or whatever. So it's a really good thing for the community to have that area to be able to put their belongings. A lot of people are downsizing, moving into apartments and such, and even for the apartments located near us, I think it would be a boon to them to have this facility so that they could store their, their goods there and feel comfortable in the community. If there aren't facilities like this, then people tend to go towards Louisville, where there are more self-storage facilities, because people do own a lot of stuff. So think if you had some jet skis, there's nowhere you can put that. You just can't put that if you live in an apartment complex, although the apartment complex next door has had boats and such stored in their facility for a while. If I go down to Outlook 2020, our county contains, this is quote, "Our county contains all the facilities and public services necessary to maintain vibrant community today and into the future." So self-storage facilities have been running at near maximum in our areas. Without having more climatized type storage or outdoor storage, the people are going to look for other places to live, frankly. So to meet the need of all the facilities and public services is called for in the Outlook 2020, there's got to be these climate-controlled and outdoor storage for people's belongings. If we look at Objective LU-1-3, it says encourage development to locate in areas with existing infrastructure. We are repurposing open range. We're not changing the lot size, we're not changing the exterior look of the building itself. The interior, if you think of self-storage, it was put to me like this, self-storage units for an indoor facility are like furniture. So basically, we're changing the furniture inside open range from having good gun ranges to having indoor facilities where you can park your materials. The objective LU-2-1 is promote connectivity, connectivity between neighborhoods. As I said, this allows people to be connected to their goods in this area. If all the units are full in the area or next to full, people can't be connected to their, their belongings. Typically, that's between a two- to three-mile radius, is what people look at self-storage facilities for. So we could help promote this connectivity. To promote, goal LU-3 is to promote increased tax revenues. If we're in a downturn, and I suspect this might be a very long downturn, all we can do is look at tax revenues go down for at least the state. I don't know the city, you guys, or the county, you guys know how that works yourselves. But for us to be able to turn this into a, another thriving industry, business, I think would be helpful for the area. In the objective LU-3-1 is support existing business retention. Obviously, this would do that. Goal CF-1 is to provide the needed community facilities and services. As we talked about, this is a needed facility and service. Goal E-2 is does not adversely impact environmental features and resources of air quality, et cetera. We've already met all our obligations for water flow, plumbing, electricity, everything's there. We're not going to change the lighting. Everything's already there. So as far as I'm concerned, it seems like we're fine with goal E-2. This is where the rubber meets the roll. The objective BI-1-2, support existing business and industry to thrive and grow in Oldham County. Encourage the highest and best use of existing industrial and commercial land through flexible land development regulations. This is the heart of our request. I'm asking you to be flexible. This waiver and the conditional use permit will allow us to repurpose the building and keep it in the community as a thriving member. We've also, I put letters in the package as far as the mayor writing that he knew us, and we've been a good business partner, I believe, for Oldham County for the last 12, 13 years, and we plan on continuing, continuing to be that. That is for the conditional use permit. I'm going to switch to the application for waiver. That's what we had heard two other people talk about. This is under three acres. We cannot increase the size of our lot. It's, it is what it is. There's no land I can purchase next to us. We're stuck. That's what we've got. So I am asking, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, because you've heard two other people talk about under three acres. And if we're fine with that, I can move on. But basically, if we can't get this done, it could be an exceptional hardship that we could encounter if we can't get the waiver done and the conditional use permit. They already talked about the other businesses having less than three acres, and I understand that that is precedent, doesn't matter here, but I just appreciate your understanding that this would help us out quite a bit. Application is, I have a waiver for parking. The reason I did this is if we have 100 and, I don't know what it was, 14, 16 parking spaces, we don't need that. Indoor facilities that have been up to 80,000 square feet, and I have a letter from one of the gentlemen that that's all he does is sell these units. He was saying that if you were building an 80,000-square-foot new facility, it may be, it may see only seven customers park over the entire day. People come, they move in, right? So they'll have a couple cars there, they'll move in, they get their self-storage, they leave. They might not come back for three years, who knows? But they don't come every day to look and touch at the field, the stuff they stored. So to have 140 parking spaces, or one per every 10, as per, I believe, regulation, it just doesn't make sense. So what I'm asking for is a waiver for that parking, that we will commit to six parking spaces for visitors plus one space per employee. Now, for the outdoor storage, you might ask, what about parking for that? Like the other facilities we've talked about already today, people tend to park next to their units, and they go in, get their stuff, and then they leave. And that is typically what you will see in an outdoor storage facility. I've put in pictures of three different facilities that basically had no, what you would call parking, specific parking spots. So we will have that area for people to park next to their belongings, next to their, their units, if you will. Also, just for clarification, for the outdoor storage, it could be parking spots, it could be units themselves, which would create the fencing, which we will get to in a minute. And we already, well, red dot has no observable parking. Storage Masters near open range has no observable parking. Storage Masters off 22, this is by satellite, right? I feel like a spy, has perhaps four parking spots. That's, that's, they get by, and I haven't heard from any of them that that's a problem for them. And again, this would bring the hardship into greater focus, having to give up rentable parking spaces where I can make an income just to satisfy a rule that doesn't make sense to me, anyway. All right. So let's go to the fencing. So we had an assumption of close, and I'm already agreeing to the opaque fencing, which is fine, because I went around town, and I took pictures of all these storage facilities that apparently have fencing, so you can't see what they have. No less than 20, I was getting bored taking pictures of people that didn't have opaque fencing. Now, I was going to submit that to you folks as my reason for not having opaque fencing, but to tell you the truth, it was really ugly. And so I'm fine with having opaque fencing where we would be approaching, or facing the parking, we're facing the parking lot, by the way, of the apartment complex and their dumpster. I'm fine having opaque fencing there so we could shield that area from the apartment buildings. What I'm asking is for the other areas that's just all about kids and the other storage facility, just to have a regular chain link fence. Now, one of the things we didn't talk about is section 330-040. That was the- Now, one of the things we didn't talk about is Section 330-040. That was the site triangle. That's page 170 in the, in your booklet there. I'm a little bit confused on that, but what I'm suggesting is that we could have opaque fencing up to where that site triangle would start area, towards the corner, in other words. They want the corner clear, so if you're coming up to make a turn, I know you don't all see that way. So what I'm suggesting is I have opaque fencing up to that point, and then we go to chain link if there's any reason for people to see through that. But I wanted to clarify that, and that I would be committing to a six-foot fence there. Now, I put in here a waiver 3B, because it's kind of part of this, but I want to, in the regulations, you have it that you will not give a certificate of occupancy until the outdoor fencing is complete for the outdoor storage. I'm going to be doing this in phases. So the goal is to do the indoor storage first and then do the outdoor storage. Well, if I'm held to, I've got to put fencing up to something I'm not even doing yet, it just doesn't make sense. So I'm asking this waiver, I'm calling 3B, to be able to get a certificate of occupancy for my indoor climate-controlled facility before I start with the outdoor storage facility. Does that make sense? That way, we can have the indoor climate-controlled storage in a position to be rented and be producing income, and then at that point, we can start with the outdoor. But if we had to do both concurrently, it'd create an undue burden for the profitability of the development. Okay. So I would like to move then to the application. What I'm calling application for waiver number four, that's the 25-foot setback and the chain link. Section 250, I know this is boring, Point 140, Point B1, it says, "All outdoor storage areas shall be screened from view by solid fences, walls, or buildings six foot or a combination thereof." I want to put chain link perimeter fencing with opaque weaving in there, because it isn't in there. I don't know why it isn't in there, because every other facility I look at has chain link fence with opaque, but at some point in the future, you folks could say, well, according to 250-140.B1, you have to have a solid wall. I can't see putting a solid fence up there. It just doesn't make sense for the type of wind load we have here and everything else, plus cost. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm asking for that to be put in there. Six-foot chain link perimeter fencing with opaque weaving, six feet in height, and then I have ingress and egress gates and immediate surrounding fencing shall be exempt from being opaque to allow for visibility for ingress and egress. In other words, by this code or whatever, it would require me to put opaque fencing in front of the gate that comes back and forth, and I want to make sure we understand that wouldn't be really a good idea if somebody's coming in and out. We want to have that area open so you can see through it. Now, the other is 250-140-B1. Number two, it says, "Outdoor storage shall not occur within 25 feet of any right-of-way." And I would like to have, "Outdoor storage shall be permitted in the existing paved parking lot borders as per site plan submitted." So we already have parking there. We already have the lot. We already could theoretically have 114 cars parked there, and we're completely abiding by everything that's already in place for Open Range. All I'm requesting is let's leave that area for me to develop. If I'm held to this 25-foot standard from, is it the roadway, Jim, or is it, do you know?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. At any rate, I believe it's from the roadway, that we might have to tear up part of the lot. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm asking if we could have 25 feet, excuse me, if we could have the existing blacktop area be the area that we would be developing for outdoor storage. If we don't, we'd have to tear out the backtop. The existing distance from me kind of walking it out and not doing a survey or anything else seems to be from 19 to 26 feet right now, and the rule is 25 feet. So I'm not one foot from the road. I'm already approximately 19 to 26 feet right now. So it would, I'm not asking for like a huge amount of landscaping or land here put aside for that. Let's see here. I have attachments, which you've either looked at or not, but it's just the storage master on less than three acres. That's A1. A2 is red dot storage on less than three acres. A3 was the location, which Brooke already went through perfectly and all that, and the existing survey and the proposed site fence plan. And that would be what I've got at this point.
Okay. All right. Does that complete your presentation at this time?
It will, yes.
Okay. All right. With that, let me ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Sir, we need to get you sworn in and then name and address for the record.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Bazanas, proceed.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's David Bazanas. I'm the Executive Director of the Oldham Chamber and Economic Development Office, and I'm here to speak in support of Barry and Cynthia Laws for the repurposing of their property. And I just wanted to take a second to let you know that we've worked with Barry in our office for many years, since he has been proprietor of Open Range Sports. He's served on our Board of Directors, and he's opened his facility up for the last 10 years to our Leadership Oldham County class so that our police and fire professionals could teach the class about those types of activities that we have in Oldham County. And I have no reason to believe that anything he decides to repurpose his property for would be anything other than a good quality. For those of you who've stepped foot and been in Open Range, you know that his facility is a top-notch facility, where it is not, there's no aspect of it that would lead anybody to think that his effort would be to do a minimum standard. He has a very high standard. He's set for himself and his business, and that's something that we've been able to witness for many, many years. So I just wanted to make sure that that was something you considered in considering his request.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in support of, support of the application? All right. Seen none. I know one else, so we'll now move into testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Get your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, Steve Porter, 2406 Tucker Station Road, Louisville, Kentucky, 40299. And I'm an attorney representing neighbors in this case.
Okay. Proceed on, sir.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I don't get here as often as I would like, but it's good to be here. I'm sorry that my old high school teammate, Mr. Combs, had to leave, but ably taken place by, I still call him Judge Carter. But anyway, it is good to be here. This is, it is interesting, as Mr. Baxter said, you know, we've got all these storage cases today, three of them in a row. I guess there's a real demand and a real need, and that's fine. But this one is a little more complicated, really, than the first two, even although the first one maybe had some site situations, but from a usage standpoint, this one is a little more complicated, and I want to get into that. I think you all have already set probably a good precedent with the case just before this, as far as the three-acre waiver for an indoor storage. I think that when that was passed back in 2007 or whatever, probably people had in mind the typical mini storage place warehouses that, where you drive up and you have a garage door that you lift up, you unlock and you lift it up, you park right in front of it, and put your stuff in and out and take off. And those type of facilities, probably a three-acre minimum is maybe a good idea. But for indoor storage, I don't think that that's probably necessary, and I think that's what you all did in the last case. The indoor storage doesn't have the same type of usage as the storage units where you get into a garage door and park in front of it, et cetera. So my clients are the owners of the apartment building right next door to this, and they are concerned about the outdoor storage portion of this. We would agree that a conditional use permit with a waiver for the indoor storage is okay. So we would have no objection to this property by our good citizen, Mr. Laws, Chamber of Commerce guy, operating an indoor storage in the current facility, the current building, with plenty of parking, probably even an overload of parking, but plenty of parking for that indoor storage. And so a waiver for the three-acre requirement and a approval of the conditional use permit, we would support. Have no objection. The outdoor is different. You know, and I've been doing land use law and planning and zoning law for a long time now, as evidenced here. Whenever you have a lot of waivers and variances or things like that, you always need to look at it and say, wait a minute. What's wrong with this proposal if we need all of these waivers of the code? And in this case, for the outdoor, you're talking about four waivers. That's a lot of waivers. And they're all pretty important to my clients who are right next door, because they're concerned about the outdoor storage. The parking waiver, well, let's get to the conditional use permit first. This outdoor storage application is just really not ready. It's not ready for prime time. It should be denied now, and maybe Mr. Laws can come back later and justify it and come up with a plan. He doesn't even have a plan for how many spaces will be used, whether there'll be spaces 10 feet wide, 20 feet wide, 30 feet long, 20 feet long, whether they'll be under shelter or not under shelter. He doesn't have any plan like that. He doesn't even indicate in his plan how many outdoor spaces there will be. And he's also asking for a parking waiver from a requirement of 41 down to seven. That's a huge waiver. That's just a big, big, big waiver. He admits in his application, and has said again today, that the outdoor is Phase Two. So what we're asking is approve Phase One, the indoor, and deny Phase Two for now. And if he comes back later with a better plan, a good plan, without a lot of waivers, and something that you can really sink your teeth into and really know what is going to happen, then that would be up to him to come back later. In his application, he also has some conflict. In one place, he says that boats and trailers would not be allowed, and in another place, he says that they would be allowed. So again, we just don't know what the plan is for that outdoor storage. Outdoor storage, is there a need? The boating center on 329 is empty. You know, if there was a huge demand for outdoor storage, I don't think that center would be empty, but I don't know what's happening on that property. But all I knew, all I know is it is empty. There's not a boat or a trailer or a car or anything parked in that property. The setback from the right-of-way, and understand, it is a setback from a right-of-way, not from the pavement. The right-of-way is wider than the pavement, and so this 25-foot setback is from the right-of-way. And we think that if by chance you were to approve the conditional use permit for outdoor storage, that none of the waivers on the opaque fencing, on the setback, none of those should be approved. But we think that the most important thing is give Mr. Laws a conditional use permit with a waiver on the size of the property for the indoor storage, and deny the conditional use permit and all the waivers that would be related to the outdoor. That's very simple. That's our position. We think that that is a justifiable position, given the lack of information that you have on the outdoor storage, and it's also a situation that could harm my client's property. My clients are in the process of renovating those apartments. I drove by there yesterday, and there are windows out by the dumpster and new windows being put in in various places, so they're trying to upgrade those apartments. And having outdoor storage of kind of an unknown situation right across the street from them, we think would be a real problem. So that's our, that's our request, that you approve the indoor and deny the outdoor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right. Is there anyone else here that has testimony or questions opposing the application? Yes, ma'am? We'll get you sworn in, and then we'll get your name and address for the record. Yes, ma'am?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Vanessa Zebich. Do you want personal address or business address?
Business. Say your name again.
Vanessa Zebich.
Tell your last name.
Z-E-B-I-C-H.
Okay.
And I'm with All About Kids, 6400 Crestwood Station, Crestwood, Kentucky, 40014.
Okay. Go ahead.
I have a letter written by the owner of All About Kids that I would like to go ahead and share snippets with you. We are very much against open-range property becoming a storage facility. We've had numerous issues with the current storage facility adjacent to our facility. We've had transit people coming through our parking lot at all hours of the night. We have mattresses, box springs, bed frames, safes, furnitures, TVs, appliances, and many boxes that are dumped all over our property. I personally have had to haul a mattress up a hill and put it in our dumpster, because our property, our problem. We have had to get this removed. Much time and cost has been towards us to get those items removed from our facility. In additions, we've had strange cars in our parking lot that are not our customers. Just the other week, I had a large RV that was parked in the very front of the parking lot, telling us that they were just at the other storage facility unloading their parking, or their storage facility. Obviously, this is not okay, and I had to have them move. Of course, with the outdoor facility parking, or storage facility, would decrease their parking, which would probably create overflow parking in All About Kids facility as well as other surrounding businesses. And of course, we are also opposed to the eyesore of not having a fence. It is not fair to say that the cost is too much and the profitability would be a burden. What about the burden around the surrounding businesses and the apartments? In closing, we have worked very hard to build this shopping center and make it a great place for family and friends. We still have had nothing done with the Louisville Mall Association property that draws a vulnerability to our area. Sorry. And we do not want any more riffraff during our property value and create a danger for our families.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify or be opposed, or is opposed to the application? Anyone else here? Okay. Seen none. Before we move into the questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission, I think we will take a break for lunch. I think the lunch for the commissioners should be here. I'm sorry.
You can go check. I mean, she went to go get it, so I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Well, I hate to just start and then stop in the middle of a, you know.
Well, you can go through all the public comments, close public comments, and then-
Well, we have. That's what we just did.
Closing statements.
Well, we've got questions. We'll take a break for lunch here, and we'll try to be back a little after 1:00. And just encourage the, you know, folks that are here, don't talk to the commissioners about this case or an upcoming case. So we will be back a little after 1:00. Thank you.